Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back. We'd like to call to order this meeting of the San Jose City Council for the afternoon of August 13th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
President.
Torres.
President.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
President.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelaus.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
President.
Kamay.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be given by Frank Arajo, founder and owner of Arajo's Mexican Grill, and Councilmember Dwan will tell us more.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce Frank Arajo, a distinguished member of the San Jose community for over two decades. Mr. Arajo is a founder of Arajo's Mexican Grill, which began with a single food truck, El Paisa, in 2005, and has since expanded to three thriving locations across San Jose. Beyond his entrepreneur success, Mr. Arajo is a committed philanthropist who, in partner with his church, dedicate both time and resource to support those in need. Frank, we are grateful for your contribution and look forward to hear from you. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, and so pleased and humbled for this invitation. First of all, I would like to probably say that well blessed, well blessed through my They asked me to speak a little bit about me. I came here quite a few years ago. I was 13 years old when I came to this country. And I came alone. Somebody asked me why I chose San Jose. Well, I knew that a family member was living in this city, so I came directly to San Jose. So I struggled at the beginning of my life when I came to this country, but then I went to church. I found a church walking one day, and I went to church, and family adopted me at that time. I was about to turn 15 years of age. My life changed. I can easily say I didn't go to school. They took me to school. I was treated as a regular member of the family. Like I say, I was well blessed. My life went from hard times to have a family, going to school, got married, and then find a job. I used to cut trees, and I made and created my own business at that time. That was right after I finished my mission call at church at the age of 21. And little by little, my life started changing. Yes, if somebody asks or wonder how I came over here, I'm not proud, but I did come illegally to this country. Later, I was able to fix my documents and work for a well big company in Germany. I was transferred and worked out of Germany for 16 years. And after I finished my plan of retirement, I came here and I opened a restaurant. Well, actually, it was not a restaurant, it was a taco truck, taco trailer. And from there, we grew a little bit and created three more restaurants. Like I say, and put emphasis on this, I've been well blessed. I tried to follow the law. I tried to follow what is good, not only for me, but for people around me. I have 45 employees that make the Arajo's company great. I would not say that we are the only taco. I'm not advertising over here that the only taco place in San Jose, but I can ensure you ours is pretty good. I'm so happy that I came here when I was 13 years old. And I'll probably say something that has taken my mind. Somebody said once, it's not what you do, it's not what the country do to you, for you, it's what you can do for your country. If we do that, you are one step ahead of many people. Yes, I also go to church, and I am a high priest. It doesn't make me nervous talking to people because I do this all the time, although we use God in our preaching and the Sunday. But basically, this is what I probably have to share with you today. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story with us, Mr. Arajo. We are, and thank you, Councilmember Dwan. We're on to ceremonial items. Councilmember Ortiz, if you would meet me at the, join me at the podium. We will recognize the San Jose earthquakes to honor their 50th anniversary.
Today, we are honoring the San Jose earthquakes during their 50th anniversary season to recognize their efforts in bringing the beautiful game of soccer to the youth of San Jose. At the beginning of the year, the earthquakes announced plans for youth soccer clinics throughout the city, collaborating with council offices like mine in East San Jose. I was grateful for what receptive partners the earthquakes have been, taking seriously the needs and limitations of children in our district, and tripling the investment from one planned clinic to three, including going directly to disadvantaged neighborhoods such as Foxtail, Polkaway, to make sure every kid in the east side had access to this amazing opportunity. While these clinics were co-ed, they clearly skewed male. To make sure that the empowerment of all of our youth sports was truly available to everybody, the earthquakes have also been organizing all-girl clinics as safe and encouraging spaces to be introduced to soccer. Our partner in organizing these clinics has been Robert Davis, Vice President of Community Relations at the earthquakes, and it's an honor to present him with his commendation. I want to see if you'd like to share a few words. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'll make it quick, but thank you so much, Councilmember Ortiz, truly appreciate it. Good afternoon, seeing city council members under y'all attire seeing my face around and your awesome, awesome, awesome staff members. My name is Robert Davis, and I'm the Vice President of Community Relations for the San Jose Earthquakes, and also the head of our Quakes Foundation, and I am joined here with Kane Nguyen, who is also the head of our grassroots team. I'm honored to be here to represent our club and foundation, expressing our heartfelt gratitude here to the city of San Jose, our council members, the mayor, and your awesome staff members for your unwavering support and collaboration throughout the years. And specifically, we wanted to thank you for your support this year, as it is a meaningful one, as it marks our 50th anniversary here as a club here in San Jose. In this special anniversary year, we've been particularly focused on leveraging the excitement around soccer to grow the game here locally. By collaborating with each of our 10 districts here in San Jose, we aim to bring soccer to each of our communities in ways that meet their specific needs, just as the council member mentioned. This year, we've engaged with communities throughout a myriad of incredible events that have brought together the city, local nonprofits, schools, youth organizations, local law enforcement, and the Quakes to allow us to holistically all work together to show up for our youth. We collaborated with Councilmember Ortiz's office in April, just as he mentioned, to bring an awesome event to the Foxtail Village apartment community on the east side. At this event, we were able to host 50 kids in a skills challenge, and we're also able to provide every youth with a soccer ball VR gear up program. In addition, later that month, we worked with the council member's office and San Jose Powell to host a soccer jamboree and a family celebration for over 300 youth. The event brought together community, including a match between Metro Powell and the San Jose Police Department soccer team, allowing the police department to trade in their dress blues for an afternoon and for their soccer blues in order to connect with the kids in a meaningful way. This summer has brought on even more events. In this past Friday, we were at Washington United Youth Center downtown, where we partnered with Catholic charities on an awesome foot salt tournament that featured Quakes legend Jason Linus, and allowed us to help amplify their awesome gang prevention program over there at Wash. By helping to provide a platform for as many of our community to have access for soccer 12 months out of the year, we believe that we can all collectively make a difference for our youth. But our commitment to the community extends beyond the pitch. In addition to our sporting endeavors, our foundation is dedicated to fighting food insecurity, which we all know is a pressing issue here in San Jose. This year, we're collaborating with 10 local partners to distribute 50,000 meals to those in need, reinforcing our belief that nurturing a healthy, active lifestyle starts with ensuring that our youth and families have access to nutritious food. Furthermore, as a club, almost done, we're immensely proud to use the power of soccer to unite San Jose as stewards of our community. Earlier this year, we partnered with the city of San Jose and the San Jose Sports Authority to host watch parties for every single game of Euro Cup and Copa America, helping to bring the joy and excitement of those events to the heart of our city. Each one of those events was attended and put together by Kang over here. Looking ahead critically, the excitement around the World Cup in 2026 with Levi Stadium in the Bay Area as a host site presents an incredible opportunity for all of us to continue and share and leverage the power of our beloved game here locally to make a lasting difference in our communities while we showcase San Jose on a global stage. Thank you, District Five, Councilmember Ortiz, for your wonderful partnership, and everyone in the districts here locally for your ongoing partnership and support. Together, we're not just about celebrating soccer, we're celebrating the spirit of San Jose. Thank you.
So I want to invite my colleagues also to join us if they'd like to.
Please come on over to the podium here, and we will recognize Aimee Ramos, who, as I understand it, represented San Jose State in the city of San Jose as part of the Mexican rugby team in the Olympics. Welcome.
We've got a podium. Welcome back, yay. So, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome back again. Today, I have the pleasure of honoring homegrown international rugby athlete Aimee Ramos. Aimee has played for both the United States and Mexico and is also a national champion. She truly embodies the spirit of homegrown talent hailing from our beloved Spartan Keys neighborhood in District Three and is an alum of San Jose State University. So, go Spartans! And go Quakes, too, as well. This past summer, Aimee proudly represented our city of San Jose and San Jose State University as part of Mexico's Olympic Rugby Sevens team. Aimee is determined, disciplined, and resilient. She plays for the San Jose State Spartans Club Team, where she serves as the captain, and she earned her recognition from many international scouts. As captain, she led her undefeated team to a national championship and personally won the award for most conversions. On the international stage, Aimee has represented the United States in its Under-23 team and both Mexico's Serpientes 7 and 15s team, Serpents. Should have, should have, yeah, should have learned that word first. It's also important to highlight Aimee's academic achievements. She earned degrees in biomedical engineering, a true athletic scholar, and an inspiring role model for young student athletes. Thank you, Aimee, for allowing us to celebrate your journey, and we wish you the best in all your future endeavors, and bring us the gold next time, okay?
While she speaks, can her family come down? Sorry. Okay. Well, first off, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Yes, San Jose native, homegrown. It's been such an honor to get to represent both the United States and Mexico, and we do have a very large Mexican community here in California, in San Jose especially, so it's been an honor to represent San Jose in Mexico as well. And really appreciate my family being here, my coach. I played soccer my whole life, and when I decided to go to San Jose State, I started to play rugby, and my first ever rugby coach is here with me, and he's been through almost every step of my journey, and I couldn't do it without their support and the city of San Jose for all the spaces that I've always had to train in, San Jose State for being in San Jose, and yeah, so, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, and now, Councilmember Batra, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim August 15th as Indian Independence Day.
Good afternoon. August 15th, 2024, is the 77th anniversary of India's Independence Day. India is the largest democracy in the world, and it partners extremely well with the oldest democracy in the world in promoting our shared values. There's 120,000 Indo-Americans who call San Jose as our home. We are living in the most diverse city, and the celebrations which we do, whether they are proclamations or celebrations of any kind, their whole purpose is to bring our communities together. In San Jose, regardless of what origin we are, what religion we are, we are all one community, and we understand each other's culture, our traditions, heritage, and as a result, we develop more respect and harmony with the rest of the communities. And our goal in having these celebrations here is to do that. We are rich in Bay Area with many Indo-American organizations, and they do the same thing by celebrating India's cultural events. They promote their cultural values and create, working with the rest of the community, a create one community. Today, we have chosen two of such organizations to be receiving the proclamation that India's Independence Day, 15th of August. These organizations have been celebrating the biggest festivals. The one of the organizations celebrated on 10th of August, 15th of August, Independence Day with a parade, and our mayor and our council members, like Candelaus, we were all there to celebrate that with them. So today, Mayor, we want to present to them the proclamation to the AIA, who you met the other day, and UPMA, which is the other organization doing the same thing in San Jose. I do want to make one announcement, that we are going to be having a celebration on Thursday from 5:00 to 7:30. I would like everyone here to join us, and also anybody who can communicate this to have come and do the flag raising and celebration, have watched the cultural event which we'll be doing on the 15th of August from 5:00 to 7:30, right in Rotunda Hall, and the flag raising on the plaza. Thank you, Mayor.
of Indo-Americans, a humble thanks for recognizing AIA during the grand celebrations of Indian Independence Day. As Councilmember Batraji said, August 10th was a historic moment for Indian community in San Jose. Not only the tri-colors were everywhere in San Jose, but AIA organized a first-time-ever Indian parade on the streets of San Jose. We're indeed not just proud, but truly, truly humbled and want to convey the gratitude on behalf of entire Indian community to the council members of San Jose for making this possible, and also special thanks to Candelaus and Mr. Candelaus and Mr. Batraji for coming on that day and being part of the festivities. And this is just one of many that we do in San Jose. In fact, it is our hometown, and wholly, the Festival of Colors, we've been celebrating in for the last five years in Discovery Meadow Park, which brings thousands of people and the vibrant colors. And not just that, we worked very closely with Mr. Mahan also in cleaning up the parks, and we have expressed interest that we would like to contribute more in a lot of nonprofit and charity activities that the city of San Jose takes care of. And also, we want to pledge this time that we would like to do a backpack drive during the holidays for the city of San Jose, which is many more and many more to follow. Thank you for giving this great opportunity.
Thank you. And on behalf of UPMA, I'd like to say a few words. First of all, thank you, San Jose Mayor, Matt Mahan, sir, Councilmember Arjun Batraji, Councilmember Domingo, Councilmember Beyond, and everyone for helping and recognizing UPMA in this beautiful stage. We are very blessed and honored to be here today. Not only you are helping, but I'd like to thank you from 120,000 underprivileged children we are serving, our executive committee of UPMA, all the board members of UPMA, all the volunteers, donors, as well as all the city of San Jose. Today, we are organizing the biggest dandia of the United States right here in San Jose because of our beautiful San Jose maintained by our city council, as well as the mayor. Today, we organize one of the biggest holi, which is also organized by AIA and UPMA here in the Bay Area, which is the pride of our city. We keep our culture alive. At the same time, we all work for underprivileged children, people right here in the Bay Area, and stand for them and take care of each other as a family. Once again, Uttar Pradesh Mandal of America, UPMA, we are very blessed and honored to be here, and we are very thankful to Mayor Matt Mahan, Arjun Batraji, Domingo, and everyone for recognizing UPMA as well as the AIA today. Thank you so much. This is Ritesh Tandon, President of UPMA. Thank you.
All right, and again, Happy Independence Day to all who are celebrating, and congratulations on the first historic Independence Day parade. It was a wonderful event. We are on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I'm not seeing any hands go up. Today's meeting will be adjourned in memory of Dr. David Ebersol, a master educator, photographer, actor, and musician, who passed away Sunday, May 19th of this year. He was an amazing teacher at Leva Middle School in Eastside, San Jose, who shared his knowledge and love of the arts with his students for decades. Councilmember Candelaus, please tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, today, we adjourn in loving memory of Dr. David Ebersol, educator, photographer, actor, and musician, a truly transformative teacher at George V Leva Middle School located in my council district, and was also known for his deep understanding and love of literature. In his 35 years as an educator, he enriched the lives of hundreds of students, many of whom are from historically underserved neighborhoods, by captivating them in the classroom and encouraging fearless self-expression throughout the arts. When Dr. Ebersol moved to San Jose in 1980, he taught many immigrant students, predominantly from South America and Vietnam, giving them the opportunity to write stage productions and challenge themselves artistically. Even after achieving his doctorate in English in 1994, he brought his talents to the east side of San Jose, where he felt kids needed it the most. Dr. Ebersol's passion for the arts and his impact as an educator and mentors on others is undeniable. He was a driving force of confidence for his students, instilling the belief that they were always enough and could do anything they set their minds to. Although I never had the privilege of being taught by Dr. Ebersol, one of my staff members was a student of his, as well as many of the families I represent in District Eight. In fact, I think a few are actually in attendance. In fact, I think a few are actually in attendance. To have such an impressive educator explore iconic works of literature such as Shakespeare was a meaningful experience for many in our community. If you were a student of his, you could still pull off a little bit of old English to this day. His challenging assignments and constructive feedback set the foundation for many of his students to achieve academic success, and he adored the innate passion and creativity that Leva students brought to the table. Go Bulldogs! I personally attended his memorial service and learned that Dr. Ebersol also taught at the college level, but compared to his junior high students, he found the work of his college students to be unimpressive. After retiring in 2015, Dr. Ebersol moved back to New York with his family, but frequently returned to the West Coast to reconnect with his former students and colleagues. This continuous mentorship and connection was a testament to how much he cherished the people right here in San Jose. There was more to Dr. Ebersol than being an educator. He lived and he breathed through the arts and through music. He spent years strumming his guitar to country music and rock ballads with several pickup bands, playing in clubs and open mic sets. He traveled wherever his soul led him, all while bringing joy to the lucky people who saw him perform. Dr. Ebersol is survived by his mother Helen, his sister Kate, brother Mark, and his wife Maria, and his two nieces Kate and Jane, as well as many loving cousins across the United States. As I mentioned, I know there's a couple people here in our audience from our community who knew him, and we're fortunate to have his sister Kate join us virtually from New York to share a few words.
I'd like to speak on behalf of my family, and on behalf of my family, I'd like to say thank you so very much. That was already a very powerful testament to the man that my brother was. Thank you, Councilman. He did touch many, many lives over the course of his life in different ways. I just, I really want to just speak to who he was a little bit, as far as how he perceived his role as a teacher and his role as somebody that could change people's lives. My brother David, when he loved something, he put his whole heart and soul into it completely. Now, I will also say that if he didn't love something, he didn't really give it much attention, but boy, if he loved it, he gave it his all, and he loved teaching. And because he loved teaching, it gave, he loved it for many reasons, but because he loved it, he loved the kids he taught to, and they felt that love. I think what he loved was that he knew that they all had this innate ability, this innate creativity, this ability to be, as the council member, Councilman Candelaus said, to be everything they could be, and they were enough just the way they are. I cannot tell you how many students of his and others wrote testimonials to how he touched their lives, how he helped them find themselves, how he changed their lives, helped them see something in them that they weren't able to see until my brother was able to bring that out in them, and that was his skill, that was his talent. And it came from both his, his love of the creative energies of teaching, which is what he studied when he got his doctorate, was creative education and gifted education. Also, though, intellectually, he wanted to make sure he was delivering the teaching product, if you will, in the best, most advanced possible way, which is how and why he brought in Shakespeare, brought in literature, brought in all that, brought in poetry and writing, and loved what his kids would write, and he would show them that enthusiasm for what they wrote, which in turn told them, yeah, they had those abilities inside of them. He touched a lot of lives, and I can say, it was obvious, over the years, so many students would, he stayed in touch with so many of them. I mean, come on, how many of you write a Christmas card to one of your junior high teachers every year? Think about it. Yet he would receive dozens and dozens of them every year from different students. That's who my brother was, and that's how he touched lives. I will say, a couple weeks before he passed, he said something to me, and I want to share it with you, try to, it's been a couple months, but it's still, because I love my brother very much. He said to me, you know, one of the biggest blessings you can have in life is to love what you do. And he patted his chest and looked at me and said, I have been very blessed. And I will say in turn, I know he was blessed to be in San Jose and to reach the kids that he reached in San Jose, and he knew how much difference that made to the school kids that whose lives he touched, that it was an area of need, and that he was helping those kids be as much as they can be in this life. And I think in turn, I know he blessed those kids, and in turn, he was blessed. So thank you, thank you so much. And on behalf of my family, we so appreciate this adjournment in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, Kate.
Thank you, Kate. That was beautiful. Thank you, Councilmember Candelaus, and we're very sorry for your and your family's loss. We did not have any changes to the agenda, so we will move on to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Okay, thank you. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items that council would like to pull from consent? Apologies. Okay, I don't see any hands. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Great. Tony, do we have a public comment on the consent calendar?
We do not.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we are on to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Torres's is not working, so that's 11-0. I just want to note that for the record, and we'll get that fixed.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I just have a quick recap on our last week's National Night Out on August 6. As everybody's aware, National Night Out is an annual community building event that provides police community partnerships in safer neighborhoods. One of the San Jose Police Department's strategic goals emphasizes the importance of partnering with our diverse community to promote public safety, enhance collaborative problem-solving efforts to prevent crime, and improve the quality of life for all. This goal furthers our Public Safety City Service area. Last week, again on Tuesday, August 6, 161 neighborhoods, including 64 neighborhood associations throughout San Jose, hosted a National Night Out event. Nearly 200 San Jose Police Department personnel visited various events and engaged with our residents. I know our fire department also participated as well. I want to thank the mayor and city council for supporting these vital events and ensuring this tradition can continue to improve community police partnerships. I know your presence is very appreciated out there with all of our police department. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, Jennifer. It was really a great evening, as always. I know everybody on the council was out in the community. I avoided the rookie mistake of trying to make it to 10 National Night Out events, and it could have went to four or five, but everybody seemed to be having a great time, and I just want to echo our city manager's thanks to our acting chief, Joseph, and the whole department for the community engagement and community policing that you're so committed to. It makes a big difference. Okay, we are going to move on to item 3.3, actions related to Mayor and councilmembers' travel to Dublin, Ireland for the Sister City delegation. And why don't we go to public comment first?
I have no cards.
Okay, then we will come back to the council and turn to Councilmember Torres.
So that week, I have to start preparing for Fiesta Patrias, which has happened here at San Jose City Hall, and I'm pretty active in organizing that major community event for our Mexican-American community, and so with that, I want to take myself off consideration for going to Dublin, Ireland.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. Appreciate that. Let me turn to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also going to be taking my name off the list for the trip to Dublin, Ireland.
Okay. And then I'll just note, I will ask for a motion. I put in a memo asking that the council approve, Councilwoman Pam Foley, to be the delegation lead. Per, I believe, council policy, typically if the mayor can go, he or she is the lead or has to designate someone, so given that Councilwoman Foley is our liaison to the Sister City program on behalf of the council and was deeply invested in it, and I think she herself may be Irish, is that right, of Irish ancestry?
So moved.
Thought she'd do a good job.
Exactly.
Thank you. Motion from Councilwoman Torres, and it sounds like there will then be four attending, it sounded like. We had two councilmembers, remove their names?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and so the motion includes my memo. Thank you. All right, and we did not have public comment, so let's vote. Okay, great, thank you. We're on to item 3.4, Adoption of Statement of Policy and City Council Questions for the Perspective Chief of Police. I'll turn to our city manager who's leading the search.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Today, the administration is bringing forward a statement of policy and questions for the chief of police recruitment. The city administration has prioritized the community's feedback and the selection process through community meetings and surveys. Over the past few months, the administration conducted extensive community outreach to gather feedback on the leadership, knowledge, skills, and abilities that should be considered for selecting our new chief of police. I want to remind everybody, and I've put out several information memos, that the outreach has included six in-person community meetings, two online community meetings, including one specifically tailored for our disability community, an online survey of city residents and police department employees separately, six focus groups with police department employees, interviews with the mayor and city council members, and numerous interviews with other key stakeholders. Staff collected and synthesized all this community feedback into the document we have in front of us that we're asking for your approval of, and I am very confident it reflects an accurate snapshot of what city residents and stakeholders hope to see in our next chief of police. I do want to thank again the mayor and city council members and the community members for their input into this recruitment thus far, and look forward to working with you all to confirm a candidate in the coming months. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate you keeping us in the loop on the process. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Azazel Holmquist, please make your way down to the podium.
Yes, right here. You'll have two minutes. You should see a timer appear on the podium.
Who is the police chief to address?
The chief is not here. This is a list of questions for the chief, for the interview process as we hire our next chief.
Okay, yes. How do you plan on handling misconduct from your officers, and are you willing to allow charges pressed and allow termination of employment without pension remaining instated? I think this is a serious matter, and I'd like it to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to council.
Great, thank you. Turning back to the council, Councilwoman Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. Reviewed the questions, they all seem great. I just wanted to add one, and it would be this. How would you collaborate with unhoused, focused departments, teams, organizations to address and manage the challenges associated with homelessness?
We can do that.
Wonderful, thank you. And I can repeat that, Lee or whoever's driving that down.
No, we're capturing it all.
We've got somebody capturing anything that's changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Did you want to make a motion in addition to your adding your question?
Yeah, and I'll make a motion to approve the existing list of questions in addition to my list, and yeah.
Great. All right, I don't see any other hands. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We're on to item 3.5, Fiscal Year 2024/2025 Property Tax Levy for General Obligation Bonds. There's, I understand it is no presentation, so we will see if there's any public comment.
No public comment.
Okay, coming back to the council. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Great, thank you. I don't see any other hands. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. On to item 3.6, Public Hearing for the Fiscal Year 2024/2025 Annual Residential Solid Waste Collection Service Charges to be placed on the Santa Clara County Secured Property Tax Roll. And Rick Bruno, Director of Finance, is coming down to make brief remarks. Rick, I have a note here. Are you offering remarks on items 3.6 and 3.7? Should we be taking them together or separately? Assume separately.
They're separate items, yes. There's public comments, public hearings with each item, so.
Great.
3.6, I'll just tee it up. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name's Rick Bruno, Director of Finance. On 3.6, I just wanted to call out, this is an action that includes conducting a public hearing for the 24/25 Annual Residential Solid Waste Collection Service Charges to be placed on the property tax roll. As noted in the memo, this will allow the city to bill and collect $158 million in revenue, and that's across 198,000 parcels for residential solid waste program. This process allows us an efficient and effective billing and collection mechanism, and at this point, I'll allow you to open up the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Do we have a public comment on item 3.6?
No.
Okay, back to the council.
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Motion from Councilwoman Foley. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, on to item 3.7. This is for Fiscal Year 24/25 Sanitary Sewer Service and Use Charge, which will also be on the Secured Property Tax Roll. Do we have a public comment on item 3.7?
There is no public comment.
Okay. And Rick, did you have more to add? Please feel free, apologize.
Very similar. For this one, there's $231 million in revenue that we're collecting for the sewer system, and this is across 238,000 parcels, so nearly every parcel is billed through our sewer on the tax roll program. So again, very efficient and effective process for collecting revenues.
Great, appreciate the summary. Still don't believe we have any public comments, sorry if we're going out of order there. So we are back to the council. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Great, motion from Councilwoman Dwan, second from the Vice Mayor. Let's vote. Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. We are on to item 6.1, San Jose Clean Energy 2024 Midyear Rates, and we have a brief staff presentation. I see Lori coming down to the box.
She's coming down. I want to thank Lori for starting her stint as the Acting Director of Environmental Services Department this last week, and doing a little double duty here. Thank you, Lori.
Yeah, thanks, Lori, and I see.
Zach, who's here, for also stepping up for the helping with the Energy Department and its leadership. Thank you.
Keeping you guys busy. All right, ready when you are.
All right, thanks so much, Mayor and Council. So Lori Mitchell, Acting Director of ESD, and I'm going to turn it over to Zach Strike, who is the Acting Director of the Energy Department.
Good afternoon. So here today to discuss a proposed change in rates, that's a rate reduction per the three attachments to the memo. We're also fleshing out a residential super-off-peak charging rate pilot program that we brought to council earlier in the year. As you'll recall, in February earlier this year, council approved rates that were approximately 8% below those of PG&E, after a significant rate increase by PG&E. At that time, we raised our rates slightly to get to that 8%, anticipating a rate reduction later by PG&E, and indeed, they did reduce their rates July 1st. The rates that we are proposing represent approximately 7% reduction in San Jose Clean Energy rates, which is a later by PG&E. And indeed, they did reduce their rates July 1st. The rates that we are proposing represent approximately 7% reduction in San Jose Clean Energy rates, which is approximately $4.50 for the average residential customer. And that will end up being approximately 1% to 3% below PG&E rates for most customers. Pardon me. As a reminder, we have three things that we hold as we, in our rate setting. The first is to always offer our customers competitive rates and striving for stability as much as we can. We use, as of two years ago, a cost-of-service model to set our rates as opposed to a PG&E plus or minus certain percentage to make sure that we are covering our costs, and always have been striving to build reserves to cover up to 180 days of operating expenses. Regarding the new super off-peak rate pilot program, we are going to be reducing rates significantly in the morning hours of, excuse me, morning and early afternoon hours of 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM every day. And those are the hours where there is excess, or certainly the most plentiful renewable energy on the grid. And so, costs to serve customers are lowest, and that's why we want to try to incentivize customers to use energy and charge their vehicles, heat their homes, et cetera. So, the plan is to auto-enroll the existing customers on a newly-created electric home rate schedule. Currently, there are approximately 1,750 customers, but that number is increasing every day. And other customers on different rate schedules can switch over to that to sign up to take advantage. So, it's going to be a one-year program or the up to $200,000 of cost, or one year, whichever comes first. And will help us see how customers do change their behavior, and will inform future rate design. In terms of the impacts to, of the rate change on our financial status, we are happy to say we are a bit ahead of plan that we, that we set the rates in February based on, as a result of mild spring and winter temperatures. That's allowed us to make great progress on our operating reserve targets, as you see there. Note that we expect to finish fiscal year 23-24, we're just wrapping those books up right now, at about $250 million. However, in the top table there, that's the end of calendar year. So, the, as a result of reduced revenue, as a result of the rate change today, as well as higher summer operating costs, power costs, we will finish the calendar year flat or maybe a little bit down. And you'll notice that whereas on the previous slide, $250 million was over 200 days of operating expenses, because of the increased costs in the second half of this year, 240 will only make 168 days of operating expenses. So, apologies for the confusion there, any confusion there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Zach. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Not for this item.
Okay, let's come back to the council. Turn to colleagues, starting with Councilor Cohen.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and for bringing this forward. I think it's great that we continue to model for everyone that being responsible and doing the right thing when it comes to clean energy is not, does not mean people pay more for their energy. So, I'm excited that we will continue to be able to offer rates to clean energy customers below those of PG&E based on this action. I have a few questions on the new rate plan. First is, when will people be switched over, and when will they see that on their bill?
Thank you for the question. So, assuming council approves today, these rates would go into effect August 15th, and customers would begin to see that on their, on their September bills.
And the, and the statement, and the bill will reflect that by having that tag E-dash, I forget the exact acronym that was there, but that you'll be able to tell you're on that plan?
That's right. We're also going to be sending welcome-to-the-plan emails, postcards, things like that, so that everyone who is, is signed up either automatically or who proactively asks to be switched to that is going to get that welcome-to-the-plan email communication.
Yeah, and for many of us who grew up being taught that it was best to run your appliances and use energy in the middle of the night, it was great when I learned in the spring at our TNE committee meeting that actually that's not the case, and that because of the new clean energy model that we have, there's excess solar on the grid during the day, and it's better to run during the day. So, my household has switched to running our dishwasher and washing machine between the hours of 9:00 and 2:00 every day. I'm hoping I'll be switched on to this plan. But it's just something that I want to help, wanted to ask about how we're trying, how we're informing people in the city and customers of clean energy of this new paradigm, because I still think many people believe, and it was even tough telling my family, no, no, this is no longer the case. How will we start to tell people, these are the best times of the day to run your appliances?
Yeah, it's a, it's a constant drumbeat, and, you know, it's a continued challenge to get the word out wherever we can. So, it's in almost all of our communications. It's in monthly newsletters, social media posts, every time we're out at events, that's the collateral, that's the high talking point. So, open to suggestions and really want to work with your offices to help get the word out. So, expect council toolkits coming your way, and thank you for your help.
Yeah, and you, I heard you say people will be able to switch over. Is that true? Is this a pilot for people only to start there, or will people from the beginning be able to opt into the program?
People from the beginning will be able to opt in. We're going to need to, we're hopeful that it's so popular that we might have to pause the, to stop the enrollment so that we can get a good number of months of data about how people behave in their, in their switching.
But for now, there's excess room for people to move into the program?
There is excess room. Call San Jose Clean Energy or find our website.
And so, I, hopefully you'll send information to our offices for, just put in our newsletters about this so we can let people know.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then one last thing I was going to ask. I see the impact on the fiscal, the finances of the clean energy program. We had a target of making sure we had 180 days of reserves. We have exceeded that now. This program and the other rate change will bring us down, it looks like in the 160 to 180 range. My interest is in making sure that we're, we're going to continue moving forward to be able to implement the programs that we implemented as a council in the spring during the budget process. So, I just wanted to ask and make sure that those programs that investing in helping people transition to electrification, all the things that we put in as incentives, will continue to be able to be at the level that we started with and maybe even higher in the future going forward.
Yes, that's correct. We, as I said earlier, we anticipated that such a reduction was coming, and so we built that into our planning in the budget process.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. With that, I will move that we approve these rate changes.
Great. Thank you, council member. Councilor Foley.
Thank you. Just to echo the sentiments of my colleague, I'm really happy to see that the reserve policy, that the reserve numbers are staying strong and gaining. That's really positive. I also like to see that we are staying close or below what PG&E is offering. That's important for us. I have a question for, about this new program, E-Elect SJ. So, if you have, you're on the solar billing plan now, you will automatically be enrolled into this, and/or we have to proactively do something? I wasn't clear about that.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. So, the E-Elec existing rate, also known as Solar Home, that is for customers who have already, are, they opted into that rate and largely, and are doing something like EV charging, or they have a battery or something like that. So, customers who are already on that rate will automatically be enrolled.
Okay. And to know if we are on that rate, it's on our bill?
Correct.
Our bill will state that.
And if you can't find your bill, you can call us, and we can tell you.
Okay, good enough. And how many customers did you say we have already?
We have approximately 1,750 customers already on that rate schedule, and that's, that's increasing every day.
Okay.
And so, I think we can, you know, it really depends how much usage, how much habit-shifting there is. But we think at least 2,000 customers should be able to participate.
Yeah, as someone who drives an EV and has solar panels, I'm thinking, okay, how am I going to charge my car while I'm here, but I need to charge it over there. So, I think I'll just switch cars that particular day. I don't know. But I think this is a great opportunity for us to think more responsibly about how we're using power. And I didn't even think about using my dishwasher and washing machine and everything else during what I consider peak hours, but they're not. They're, for the solar, solar panels, they're off-peak hours. And that's, that's really a shift in mindset that I hadn't actually gone through yet. So, thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Cohen. You already made a motion, so I'm happy, happy to support that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, council member. Councilor Batra.
Thank you very much for that report, and to see that we are actually taking the message that we are going to be reducing rates. Because as I've gone around in the community, one of the biggest complaints we've been getting is all the utility rates are constantly rising, and the water rates, the electricity rate, they went up. So, it's a good news, and we need to publicize it a lot. Now, my question is that we are reducing the rate for the energy generation piece of the bill. It is the distribution cost stays the same, whatever it was. Is that true?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And the reason this rate is going down is because we are buying this thing cheaper, the energy cheaper than we were buying before, or we found some other magic?
The, the reason that we are able to reduce the rates is that one of our costs was, is contribution to the operating reserve. And we are making the decision that we have made enough progress on that, that, you know, we're balancing things, contributions to reserve and financial stability, keeping things competitive for customers. So, we are making the decision, or the recommendation to council, I should say, that, that we are going to make less of the contributions to operating reserves. This is not a reflection necessarily of some different cost profile in power procurement or anything like that.
Okay. So, because PG&E rate going down, we don't buy much from PG&E, correct, the energy?
No, not, not, not very much. It's not zero, but not very much.
Right. So, their rate going down would not really become cheaper source for us, and as a result, we would be able to reduce. So, it has to something else. And you're saying primarily it is because we change how much contribution we are doing. All right. Is there any likelihood that we will be able to get a reduction in the distribution rates?
We are constantly advocating with our fellow CCAs and other customer, customer ratepayer advocates in the legislature and at the Public Utilities Commission and everywhere we can.
If there's any, anything we can do about it, because that's one of the, as I said, it's a common request from the, especially people who are on the fixed income, seniors, they're finding their utility bills proportionally becomes too large, and they would like any help we can. And we've told them the city has only limited powers in doing this kind of stuff. So, it would be appreciated any, any lever we can pull to make that happen. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. Councilor Cohen.
I just thought of one more question to ask. So, for people who are on the new plan, many of them, as Councilmember Foley pointed out, will be, it would be preferable to charge their vehicle during the day, for example. But if they're gone and they charge their vehicle overnight, will there be a negative impact on them for, for not shifting?
Good question. As we've designed the pilot, no. So, the, this is a net positive? There's no downside to being, to being on this. In the future, we may consider, you know, having, having a reward for, for charging during the day and perhaps a slighter, slightly higher cost in other times, but not in the pilot.
Okay, great. And I just want to follow up on another conversation that was happening. And this isn't really just for people with solar on their homes. It's for everyone because there, it's not just that there's excess capacity for those of us who have solar, but the way our purchase of energy is, is because so much of it is solar, there is more energy on the grid during those daytime hours between 9:00 and 2:00. And therefore, it's good practice for everybody to be running during the day, not just people with solar. I just want to make sure that that was, that was clear.
Correct. You said that, you said that very well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good point. Thank you, council member. I think we're ready to vote on Councilor Cohen's motion. Great, thank you. And now we will discuss item 6.2, which is an amendment to council policy 1-24, San Jose Clean Energy Financial Reserves Policy. And we also have a short staff presentation.
Thank you again. I'm Zach Strike, the Acting Director in the Energy Department. I'm joined here in the box by Rick Bruno, Director of Finance, as well as Jennifer Stevenson, Principal Accountant in the Energy Department. We're asking council to consider adopting a resolution amending council policy 1-24, the San Jose Clean Energy Financial Reserves Policy, to establish a rate stabilization reserve for San Jose Clean Energy. Rate stabilization reserves are a financial tool used by utilities to set rates, excuse me, who set rates based on the cost of service in order to manage fluctuations in costs or revenue. The purpose, as you hear in the name, is to keep rates stable for customers considering expense fluctuations. A big one is the PCIA, the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment, which we've talked about at length here at council over the years, as well as other increases in, potentially in market cost of energy. And the accounting treatment of the reserve, as Jennifer will describe in more detail, allows the funds in such a reserve to be used in ways that our existing reserves cannot.
Thank you. The GASB-62 allows us to actually make some changes to our financial statements to supplement the cash reserves. So, this is an example of our Statement of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Net Position. With GASB-62 rate stabilization, a $30 million deferral actually goes as a negative on that statement, which reduces our operating income and net position, which can be good in a year where you have a high operating income. That $30 million of revenue is deferred to the Statement of Net Position where you see the reserve balance. Just to note that this is, the $30 million is for illustrative purposes. FY '24 is a strong year, and the reserve would allow up to $50 million to be transferred. This example shows a withdrawal year. This is when revenue can be recognized back into your Statement of Revenue, Expenses, and Changes in Net Position. So, you see the rate stabilization reserve on the right-hand side, and the Statement of Net Position has now reduced by $10 million. And on the left-hand side, you see that our operating revenues has increased by $10 million. This can be very good. This means that instead of raising rates, we were able to recognize the revenue that had been earlier accrued. The mechanics in reporting, as any reserve, there's deferrals would only be at year-end. It would only be allowable when there's net position greater than 5% of total revenues for the year, and the reserve balance would be capped at 10% of total revenues for the year. There is no minimum reserve balance for this reserve. Withdrawals can be made at any time during the year as necessary to satisfy our legal covenants, contractual obligations, and maintain the investment-grade credit rating. Reporting, you'll see this in the Source and Use of Funds Statement in the Proposed and Adopted Operating Capital Budgets and Annual Report. This will be visible in the Quarterly and Annual Financial Statements, also during the annual rate studying process and Quarterly Information Memoranda to Council on SJCE Compliance. Legal Considerations, reserves have been held to be legitimate for electrical serps. SJCE is, is governed by Prop 26 as are CCAs, and that allows us to use GASB-62. Thank you. Welcome any questions at this time. Thank you. Welcome any questions at this time.
Great, thank you. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Victor Niemeyer. Please come on down to the microphone.
I think your mic may be off. Thank you.
I'll try to go. All right, hi. I have five comments. And basically, as you can see from the graph, San Jose's in really good position financially. The reserves have grown, the money's piling in. We have about 30% margin on our power costs for the moment. You don't know what the future is, that's always hard. Second point is, this reserve thing is essentially an added cost. It's viewed as a revenue requirement. So we're talking about a $30 to $50 million added cost, and that's customer money, and that's where those reserves are coming from. My third point is, this is complicated. Boy, the memo dropped, you know, I've read it several times. I don't understand it, to be honest. And I haven't had a chance to really interview the staff. It's, don't have a way to do that. But there are a lot of moving parts here. I will say something about stability reserves. They don't lower the rates, they just smooth out the changes. And so ultimately, the only source of revenue is the customers, and we've added $30 to $50 million revenue requirement here. Fourth thing, this just came out last Friday, as far as I can tell. Maybe I'm wrong on that. But this is a lot to try to digest over the weekend. I didn't look at it till yesterday. The last thing is that the Climate Commission has not seen this. You have an advisory structure that's meant to do and look at these things, and, you know, they could have helped you. Lastly, just to close, I suggest you defer this until you get feedback from the commission. The money isn't going to go anywhere. It's going to keep piling in. It's just what stamp you put on it until then. Thank you.
Back to council.
Okay. Thanks for the public comment. Turning back to my colleagues. Do we have questions from colleagues? I'll go and pick up on the public comment. Just curious when these recommendations go to the Advisory Committee, which I used to serve on, enjoyed, learned a lot. When do these things go to the commission and not? And would it be useful to get input?
As a reminder, the Advisory Commission now is slightly different than that which you served on, Mr. Mayor. So this is now the Climate Advisory Commission, which has a much broader remit and responsibility to cover. And it's a newly created commission. I think we've had three meetings now. And I would say that the commission is still sort of finding its footing as to how it's going to operate, and it's still in the phases of introductory briefings on the many topics. I think rates generally are brought to the commission, and this reserve's policy in the future, perhaps when we have a little bit better line of sight and the commission has more found its rhythm and cadence, likely we could. Certainly happy to bring this back, a broader discussion after the fact, to the commission and talk about the financial status and outlook for San Jose Clean Energy.
Great. Okay, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I know we did shift the charter a little of the commission, that is. And then just want to confirm with Nora, I think this was covered in the presentation, but the rate stabilization reserve is a legal use under Prop 26, as was stated by staff. Just want to make sure you all have reviewed that.
Thank you, Mayor. We have. And at the limits that are being set, it is.
Great. Okay.
I'd like to add in, Mayor.
Sure.
So, on the reporting, normally this wouldn't be shown on a Statement of Sourcing Use of Funds in the Budget, but I asked specifically for that, to be as transparent as possible with the public. So, that is one of the reasons when we went over it internally, because we do want this to be very transparent for all involved, so we can, everybody can be monitoring this. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks. That's great. Appreciate the comment. Okay, great. That's all I had. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, I just figured I would comment a little bit. I don't have, I don't, this is one of those items where it's very difficult to understand. We had a briefing last week, asked a lot of questions. This is where it's also nice to have a financial expert also as our city manager to make sure that we're doing things correctly, because I don't want to, I don't know that I have a lot to add, except to say, these are complex things. I think there's a, I understand the valid reason behind this, to make sure that we can smooth rates in the future, but these kind of accounting mechanisms are not very clear to me. So I just wanted to make that clear for the public as well. This is, some of these things are not easy. We rely on the expertise of staff and our legal folks to make sure we're following the procedures properly. We are striving at the same time to make sure that our rates are competitive, and that we're providing clean energy and other benefits to our community through this program. And as long as we're balancing all those things, I'm willing to, you know, try some new approaches to this rate smoothing. So, thank you for bringing it forward. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Second by Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Kameh.
Just a quick comment. You know, I am familiar with how stabilization can really be a benefit to the community. I know that in a lot of utilities, water and other things, they do have a tool in order to smooth it out, because it's so easy when something is volatile, that there are peaks and valleys. And so this allows a more smoother transition along several years. So, I know that it's something that will benefit the community.
Great. Thanks for sharing that perspective, Vice Mayor. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. We're on to item 10.1, the Public Hearing on the Environmental Appeal of 865 Embedded Way Industrial Project Initial Study. Oh, interesting. Okay. Is that with the, okay, sorry, my notes had it before the recess. So we are recessing until 6:00 PM. Is that right? I had it agendized as 10.3, noticed after 6:00 PM. I'm happy to defer it if folks... Okay. That's what I had here.
Yeah, 10.2 is...
So 10.2 is now. We do have a staff presentation. Then we will go, we will recess until 6:00 PM, at which point we will take up item 10.3, as I understand it. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is David Keon. I am Principal Planner on the city's environmental review team. Before you today is item 10.2. This is a public hearing on the environmental appeal of the Planning Director's Reliance on the 865 Embedded Way Industrial Project Initial Study and Mitigating Negative Declaration, otherwise known as an MND. This is for site development permit H20-022. Actually, H22-022. Just a real quick overview, the project location. As you can see on the screen, it is located in South San Jose, in the Edenvale area, in an area designated for industrial park. It is located within an area where there's already several industrial and warehouse, industrial-type, industrial park-type projects. The project components is a site development permit to construct a one-story, 121,000-square-foot industrial manufacturing warehouse, R&amp;D building, and a surface parking lot on a vacant 10.17-acre site. It would also result in the removal of two ordinate-sized trees and nine non-ordinate-sized trees. Just a real quick overview of the environmental review for the project. The city prepared an initial study supporting a mitigating native declaration, otherwise known as an MND. This identified, the MND identified significant impacts to biological resources, cultural resources, hazards and hazardous materials, and transportation. The initial study identified mitigation measure that reduce all these impacts to a less than significant level. The MND and initial study was circulated for public review from December 21st, 2023, to January 10th, 2024. It was posted on the website, and all interested parties were notified. During the public circulation, the city received four comment letters from various groups, including a tribe, including a labor union, and several government agencies. The city responded to these comments and posted those responses to the website and notified all interested parties on April 19th, 2024. This is prior to the Planning Director's Hearing on May 1st, 2024. Immediately prior to the Planning Director's Hearing, staff received two comment letters in the evening, immediately prior to the hearing, one from the Mitchell M. Sign Law Group, representing Carpenters Union 405, and another one from Adams, Brodeau, Joseph, and Cardozo, representing Silicon Valley Residents for Responsible Development. Staff responded to these comment letters briefly during the public hearing on the Director's Hearing on May 1st. Subsequently, the Director adopted the 865 Embedded Way Mitigating Native Declaration and approved the site development permit. After the Director's Hearing, there was a timely appeal received from two appellants. These included the Mitchell M. Sign Law Group and Adams, Brodeau, Joseph, and Cardozo. Therefore, we are now here. So for the environmental appeal, the Mitchell M. Sign Law Group cites reasons for the appeal, including that additional biological surveys are needed, that the reliance in the city's greenhouse gas reduction strategy is insufficient, soil contamination could pose a risk to construction workers and future employees. The MND did not adequately analyze the project's construction and operational noise impacts, and that the project will result in a significant unavoidable impact to BMT and increased road hazards. Adams, Brodeau, Joseph, and Cardozo cited reasons for their appeal, including an inadequate project description, construction and operational air quality impacts, and transportation impacts of the project, including vehicle miles traveled. So staff responded to all these claims and the appeal in the memo that was posted to the council. The appellants did not raise any new issues about the project's environmental impacts, or provide information indicating that the project would result in any new environmental impacts or an increased severity in the identified environmental impacts. Therefore, staff has concluded that no recirculation of the MND or preparation of another document, such as an environmental impact report, is required. So with that, staff is recommending that city council deny the environmental appeal and uphold the Planning Director's Reliance on the 865 Embedded Way Industrial Park Mitigated Negative Declaration and Associated Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, and approve the site development permit H22-022. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the staff report. Tony, I believe we will first, do we go to public comment first, or do we hear from the appellate?
I have Jeremy. I'm not sure if he's the appellant or a member of the public. I don't know the appellate's name.
Are you the appellate? Sure, please. Come on down. So as I understand it, Tony, you may want to explain to folks. I believe each appellant has five minutes, and then the applicant has five minutes?
Yes.
Great. And then we go to public comment?
Go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Man, honorable councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again regarding this matter. My name is Jeremy Hurwitz. I represent Carpenters Local Union 405. Local Union 405 represents thousands of union carpenters in San Jose, has a strong interest in well-oiled land use planning and in addressing the environmental impacts of development projects. This project is important to the carpenters. We've reviewed the ISMND at length. We've commented several times regarding this matter. There are material deficiencies in the ISMND that warrant reconsideration. They warrant, at the very least, revision, and really at most, this project is more a candidate for an environmental impact report. That would be the proper subject of environmental review. The first and foremost concern that we have identified is that the city is misapplying, at least in our perspective, via the MND, they're misapplying the substantial evidence standard. There is substantial evidence of potentially significant environmental impacts on this project, such that an EIR is required. In its responses to comments, the city misconstrues the standard. The city takes the position that Local 405 and the other commenting parties on this project were required to put forth their own new substantial evidence of an environmental impact. This is not so. That type of substantial evidence can be drawn from the ISMND itself and its associated studies. It can also be drawn from the information and arguments raised by the other commenting parties. So when the city proceeds to reject Local 405's arguments against the viability of the ISMND, because Local 405 has not gone out and generated its own new evidence or data, the city does so in error. And we submit that that's a violation of, would amount to a violation of SEQA. Based on that misapplication of the legal standard, the Planning Director, upon approval of the ISMND, disregarded the lion's share of Local 405's arguments and adopted the MND. So we submit to you that that warrants reversal. The second is that, or second item that we'd like to call your attention to, is that there is a fair argument on this project that it may have a significant traffic impact. Mitigation measure, Transportation or TRAN 1.1, in many instances, defers the mitigation of the project's traffic impacts via the use of a public improvement plan that's to be prepared by the applicant. And it's to be prepared after environmental review is completed. Under SEQA, deferral of mitigation is impermissible. This type of, this type of shifting the burden to the applicant to perform the mitigation and to figure out the boundaries of the mitigation is not proper. The transportation, the mitigation transportation measure, 1.1, has also been revised a couple of times at this point, but the language is still unclear with regard to whether or not it actually holds the city in any form of accountability. It states that, bear with me here. It now states that, prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy, the project applicant shall submit the public improvement plan to the Director of Public Works or the Director's Designee for review, or the Director's Designee for review and approval. However, the last sentence of that measure also states that the implementation of multimodal improvements shall be verified by the Director of Public Works or Director's Designee for review and approval. What I'm driving at here is that the way those sentences are put together, it's not clear whether the Director's Designee will be, could perform review and approval, or if the, if that is a singular phrase, essentially, that the Director's Designee for review and approval is...
That's your five?
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other, wait a second, appellate? Did we not? There are two? No, only one's here. Okay. So we're on to the applicant?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Ian Hawker. I'm with Oppen and Investment
My name is Ian Hawker, I'm with Oppen and Investment Company, the lead developer for this project. I've just got two things that I ultimately wanted to state on record. First, I wanted to thank the City of San Jose, David Keon, and then Nu Nguyen for their help on this project. It's been two years, so it's been a while. I can remember back in 2021 starting this project. So through that process, it's been definitely an education, we've learned quite a bit. Hopefully, this is kind of the first of many for Oppen in the City of San Jose. And so I think through that process, although it's been timely, I think what we have learned is that, you know, we've created good relationships. I think we've learned a lot through this process, and hopefully moving forward, we'll have, maybe we'll gain some efficiency on that timeline. But overall, very appreciative for their efforts and just the thoroughness in which they've done through the specific SEQA document. Secondly, I just want to express our excitement for this project. It's been, like I mentioned, two years, and a lot has changed. It's been an interesting economical situation over the last, you know, 24 months with the Fed, but, you know, we believe in this market, and we believe in this project, and we believe in this site. And this is the last remaining piece, as was mentioned earlier, within that Edenville industrial area that Carl Berg had initially went forth with his project in 2001, so nearly 20 years ago now. And so, you know, we look at this, and the way we designed it was, not only will this provide kind of immediate, you know, short-term, I'll call it, jobs on the construction front from a local GC, but we'll also have sustainable long-term jobs as well here, given the fact that we've designed this for a high-tech corporate end-user that is seeking a modern R&amp;D facility, which this property in this project, the way it's been designed, caters for that. And so, not only during kind of the life cycle of this project, are we going to have front-end jobs in the construction front, but we'll have, you know, long-term sustainable jobs from future end-user that will be this higher-end, hopefully house of, sorry, head of household jobs as well. And so, as a whole, I'm here for questions, anything specific, just let me know. I just wanted to make sure that I said those two points in advance.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, did we have any other public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay. Thank you. And am I correct that the, as I just follow the process here, does the appellant then have a second opportunity to speak?
I'm actually looking at the attorney for that.
The full five minutes was used.
Okay, that was only if they didn't use the balance of their time. Okay. All right, then. We're back to the Council. We'll turn to Councilor Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is in District 2, so I was just going to speak a little bit about it.
Sure.
Let me just first say thank you to the applicant for your interest in building in District 2 in South San Jose, in an area there where we continue to see development and more and more industrial manufacturing R&amp;D spaces. I think it's, this is new Edenville area, and so this happens, these types of developments are happening more and more, so it's wonderful to see. I also want to thank the groups that submitted comments during the mitigated negative declaration comment period. There were a total of four comment letters, and based on staff report, I can say that I was satisfied with the staff responses to some of the concerns. And these appeals don't come forward too, too often, but they come forward enough in which I've learned over the eight years or so, just navigating some of these, is that in fact, what we have is, we have an appeal of the Planning Director Hearing from May 4th approving the project, and is outlined, and I'm sure we've all gotten the email, but as outlined by the City Attorney, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding whereby we need to make a determination and an application of facts to a specific case, and really requires findings to support approval, conditional approval or denial of a project. And in fact, we're even, which actually I hadn't remembered, but we were actually, in fact, prevented from even entering into a Brown Act, just to not make decisions before this meeting, so thank you for the reminder. And with all that being said, given what I've reviewed in the staff report related to some of the concerns tied to the project description, air quality, biological resources, greenhouse gas, hazardous and hazardous material, noise, transportation, I found the staff responses to be satisfactory, and for this reason, I want to move staff approval or staff recommendation to deny the appeal, and so that would be the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay. Appreciate your assessment and comments, Councilor Jimenez, I concur. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, okay. The Council, thank you all, the Council now recess until 6:00 PM, where we will take up item 10.3. Thank you.